Alexander introduced Senate Joint Resolution K. Ban sentencing prisoners to involuntary servitude. This resolution would place before the voters in the next general election, a constitutional amendment to repeal criminal punishment exception to the current constitutional provision that prohibits involuntary servitude. In other words, laws could not be passed that authorize sentencing prisoners to hard labor, or chain gangs or other forms of work as punishment for crimes. This resolution has been referred to committee. In closing, the Office of State Senator Betty Jean Alexander is eager and available to serve, assist, and support the communities of the 5th District. We are available to answer your questions and concerns. If you need to contact us at any time, you can call us at (517) 373-0994. Again, the phone number is (517) 373-0994. We welcome invites to community events as well, wishing you a beautiful holiday season and a Happy New Year.
Can the Speaker give her, could you give us your name?
Regina Washington.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're looking for public announcements, five minutes or less. Come to the microphone.
Alrighty, good evening, everyone. Steve Chisholm from State Representative Jewell Jones's office. Really quick, just to give you an update, 27 budget items that were vetoed by the governor were brought back. Some of those items included funding the public schooling. And also, the legislators were in session quite a while today, and they're starting at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. Like my colleague there said, was trying to get this budget wrapped up, of course, before the end of the year, and of course, the legislators want to be out of there before Christmas. Also, State Representative Jewell Jones, everyone has been inquiring about the coffee hours, he's going to be doing lunch and learns coming soon. So as those dates and locations become available, as we get everything situated, I will be alerting this council, all residents, and everybody, so that those who are interested and feel compelled can attend and ask questions. And finally, from the Office of State Rep Jewell Jones, we'd like to wish you a very happy holiday. Be safe, everybody enjoy, and as always, our office number is (517) 373-0849. And I did take note on what you all were discussing tonight with having to engage your state rep or senator. I know Dearborn Heights, the way it's all chopped up, you actually have two state representatives. So as the information is forthcoming to our office, his or State Senator Betty Jean Alexander will all be engaged and acting appropriately as we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Just a couple of announcements. This Thursday, it will be the Eaton Senior Recreation Center's annual Christmas party. If you can make it, we'd love to have you there. And also, next Wednesday, which I don't have the date offhand, I'm sorry, the Berwin Senior Recreation Center will have their Christmas party as well. And it has been moved. It has been moved from Berwin over to Warren Valley Golf Course because there was such a big amount of participants that wanted to come, and we had a waiting list, and so it was decided to be moved over there, so we can serve more people. And last but not least, thank you, everybody who attended the Christmas tree lighting. I wanted to thank the Recreation Department, and we do appreciate all of your thanks and your attendance there. But some of the real heroes were the DPW and the Building and Maintenance Department for doing what they did to have everything done. So I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Director Sellme and Mike Blackburn for everything that they did. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public announcements? At this time, I will open it up to public comments, and state your name, and limit it to three minutes, please.
Good evening. I didn't know these meetings took three and a half hours.
Mmm.
So, I'm here with a concern and a request. My concern is-
Name first, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mohamed Jani.
Thank you.
Resident of Dearborn Heights for the last 14 years. My concern is, a strange man come walking in my backyard. It was on a Friday around 6:30 p.m. It was a nice sunny day. This gentleman had a hat on and a yellow vest. I did not see him enter my backyard, but I did see him exit. And on his way out, I couldn't help but notice him looking through my sliding glass doors. Not looking in directly, but he didn't avoid them. I have five kids, and as a father, I'm very protective of my family. And I see the stranger walking in my backyard, and immediately caught my attention because my backyard's pretty decent size. He could have walked away from the window, but he walked towards the window on his way out and looked in the window. And why am I so accurate in his actions? I went back and I reviewed my video, because I have a camera in my backyard. And sure enough, I presented this to Councilman Dave Abdullah and Councilman Ray Muscat, immediately called them both, sent them the picture of the video. And it was very disturbing to them as well, and they expressed their concerns. I went out there and I told my, because we were, my family was exiting the house at the time, I told them to stay in the house. I went out there, I said, "Who are you? What are you doing here?" And he was a little startled, I says, "You think you're scared?" I says, "You don't go walking in people's houses, you don't go walking in their backyards. What do you think you're doing?" Well, I'm with DTE. I says, "Really? For what? Outage?" He said outage. I says, "There hasn't been an outage in this area that I know of. Who are you?" Took picture of his truck, took picture of his license plate, from Tennessee, has an accent. He says, "Well, I'm not from around here." So I don't care where you're from. Go walk in and somebody's back, why can't you knock on the door? Why can't you acknowledge what you're going to do? He didn't say much, I was pretty upset, and I says, "You know, you could have got shot. You could, something could have happened to you. What's it going to take for you to just knock on the door and ask to be let in? If nobody answers, slowly enter. But you come walking in my backyard like you own the place. You come walking out looking through my sliding door window. That's a problem." I was very upset, I didn't think of calling the police. But that's my concern. He declared he's from DTE. Councilman Abdullah has been in contact with some-
One of the directors.
Directors for DTE.
And she said she would look into it, and I'm gonna tell you bluntly and publicly, I've been dissatisfied, I think it was just an answer just to just-
Blow you up.
Because it's been about a week, you know, by now, somebody should have called us back.
Yes. So that's my concern. I don't know if anybody else has expressed their concerns.
So I may add three things to that particular situation, just quickly, just three simple words. One of them is gun, and one of them is dog, and one of them is privacy. And all three would have been a bad situation. So you have a right to your privacy, so they should have definitely knocked on the front door, which to me seems like common sense. Number two, they could have went back there, you could have had some dog that will obviously potentially attack, so it's a potential harm for him. And number three, although I know you as a, you know, a good citizen, but you never know, you know, when somebody can use a gun thinking, you know, and just because they had a yellow, I seen the video, that's why I was disturbed by that, because just because they have a yellow vest-
Right, with all the scams going on, you don't know who's coming-
Absolutely.
On your property. You don't know what's going on, and like I said, I have five kids.
We still don't know if he was legit.
No.
We really don't.
No, he doesn't, because-
And I ended up seeing another video, I think on Facebook, and I don't want to say it was in Dearborn Heights, I thought it was in Dearborn Heights, but I can't remember. Where it happened, somewhere else too, based on a Ring video that somebody had.
Chairman Chair.
Councilman Constance.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for coming, and, you know, DTE will sometimes say that they have an easement across your property, they have an easement for the wires, they don't have an easement to walk in. I became aware of this years ago, when some subcontractors from DTE were driving up Telegraph, and they hit our neighbor's mother head on and killed her.
Oh, wow.
They were out drinking all night. They use, it seems, worse and worse subcontractors. They have no right to enter on your property without permission, and they should have some kind of identification.
He did, I seen in the video, you could tell, I mean, you can tell what the identification is, but again, you can buy a vest off Amazon and wear some-
Yeah, like I said, with all the scams going on, he just appeared. I didn't see him walk in, there was no noise, I mean, it was startling, to say the least.
And then the truck was not, didn't, I don't think it had any type of DTE thing-
No, it didn't.
Well, had you considered making a police report even after the fact, using the license plate because of the, some other residents may have the same issue?
No, actually, after I talked to both gentlemen, you know, I don't remember if it was Dave or Ray recommended I call the cops. Like I said, I had my kids with me, we're on our way out, I actually called them from the car while I was going to my event. And, no, I didn't follow up with the police, I just-
And the truck had no identification on it?
No, no, it had no DTE, definitely not DTE identification.
Yeah, the subcontractors, you might do a written complaint to DTE-
To the attention of the police.
And the Public Service Commission.
Council?
Yeah, I would recommend that you do contact the police department with regard to this. The video will be turned over, and there'll be some investigation to verify whether or not this indeed was.
Chief Petrie?
It would strike me that that very well might not eventually been-
And the license plate, I got a picture of the truck, and I got a picture of the license plate of the truck.
Well, and you can identify the driver as well, so-
I didn't take a picture of him, I was upset.
Was it on your video?
Was it on your video?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, you see the face.
Yes, it is.
So, okay, there we go. Let's try that.
One other thing that comes, one other thing that concerns me more than anything, and I've done it, when, like, I know who you are, I mean, you and I are friends. And I went to someone's house that was a friend, he was a practicing Muslim, and I walked in his backyard, because that's where we were gonna meet, and the window's right there, and his wife was there in a private room. I was more embarrassed for her than I believed she was, because they wear the haji.
Yeah, I didn't want to bring that up, but just-
Well, I'm gonna bring it up because it's your privacy, it's your right to be able to do that in your own home, without me coming there and walking into your backyard and saying, "Look, look what I saw."
They should know, DTE should be smart enough to know the diversity of the community that they're entering, and not to take any kind of measures to contact or to understand the community that they're entering is wrong.
A right to the Michigan Public Service Commission and DTE, and I can help you follow up, because they, every year, it seems they hire worse and worse subcontractors to do the job.
It was startling for the guys telling me, "Well, I'm not from around here." I said, "That makes it even worse."
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's my concern, now I have a request.
Sure.
The fire station on Beach Daily near Ford Road, everybody knows where that is, there's a light there. I've talked to Ray about this numerous times, and I wanted to bring it up to you guys. Is there any way possible that that light can turn into a regular light during the school hours of entry, so kids can cross the street? I live two blocks away from the street, and, you know, in summertime and before winter hits, my kids walk to school. And there's other kids I see walking. Is there any way possible that that light can be a real light, let's say, in the morning, and then when the kids get out of school, so that there could be a legal crossing? Is that po, I mean, not causing the city or anybody more money, I'm just saying, turn the lights on for-
Chief Brogan, do you know?
Well, we'll take your request and run it through the Traffic Department. There's regulations that what qualifies does not qualify, and they go to school for that, and I think that's, they'll make a recommendation back to us.
That would be great. Safety for the kids, walk across Ford or Beach Daily to go to school, there's houses, children walk in the school. That's my request.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments? State your name, and limit it to three minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Angela Venegas, I live on Dwight Street. First off, I'd like to say I'd like to thank the DPW. About a month and a half ago, they finally came and trimmed the trees on my block, they did a really good job. The guys who came out were very professional. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Sellme, since you've taken over DPW, things are getting done, the streets are getting cleaned. You're doing a good job, keep up the good work, and I want to commend you, it's looking a little bit better in my neighborhood with the things that you've been doing there. Thank you.
I have an issue I'd like to bring up once again about the lights on Horn Avenue. All the way from the golf course, all the way to Chase Bank, on the north side of the street, we have one streetlight. We have Riverside Middle School there, we have children walking to school every single day. What is going to be done about this? This has been going on for over a year. I too was also at the tree lighting ceremony at the golf course, and I was amazed at what a nice facility it was. And I want to know why the city isn't doing more to promote the golf course that we as residents have paid for. And I also have another issue with the lights always being on at the golf course, on and off, on occasion at night. When I go to work in the morning, it's totally dark, the sign's not lit up, anything. What are we doing to promote something that we own now? I just, I just don't understand why we're not doing things about, doing something about that. And I want to make a comment like you, Ray, about the leaves. We have a lot of residents who are just piling their leaves into the street, I don't know why they're not being ticketed, it is against our ordinance, our city ordinance. There's a lot of cars on my way in, blocking the sidewalks. That's a hazard to our kids, anybody who's walking. We got a lot of streetlights that aren't working, you got cars blocking sidewalks, I don't understand why that's not being taken care of. Another thing is with the trash. Come home from work this Monday, last Monday, the Monday before, that's my trash pickup day. How do I know it's trash pickup day? I pull in my subdivision, and there's garbage all over the place. I don't know what GFL is doing, but they're not doing their job. The neighborhoods are littered, I have pictures and everything, I just don't get it. And Beach Daily's been repaved. In front of 6429 Beach Daily, there's about a 30-foot piece of the street that's caving in. What's being done? Anything that's being done in the city seems like it's not being done correctly. Beach Daily is what, about a year and a half old, it's been paved? And it's already falling apart?
We talked about that, you know, that part of the road is a county road, and from my understanding and how Diane Webb explained it to us, that was an emergency repair, that they wanted it only to hold up for a year or two till they get, so I understand it.
Are we wasting good money after bad?
Correct.
I mean, that's a waste of our tax dollars. It's just ridiculous. And Madam Chair, I'd like to, could you ask the mayor, do you drive around the city to see what's going on? The potholes, the streetlights being out, the garbage after GFL, do you, do you drive around ever and look at what's going on in the city to see what's not being done correctly?
I drive around all the time, and I follow the GFI trucks.
Well, aren't you concerned, why don't, why haven't we had a meeting yet about with them? And it shouldn't have taken until January, this has been going on for a year.
I meet with them periodically.
But it's not just them. We have a contract with DTE, you've mentioned it a million times in city council meetings, why do we have so many lights out? Why are we still with all lights? Why don't we have LED lights? If we have a contract with them, and we're paying for this contract, why aren't things being fixed?
Everywhere.
And I, I'm wondering, why is your house on your block the only house that's not cleaned up right now? You have a tree that was cut down over a year ago, that the stump is still sitting in the middle of the lawn.
I take exception to your particular comments.
It's the truth, I have pictures. How do you expect the residents of the city, if you can give them tickets-
Were you the ones that slashed my tires?
When you don't take your care of your, no, why, please. I have better things to do than, are you the one who threw the stuff all over my car after I called you out in a city council meeting? You want to take blame on people?
Okay.
I have better things to do than take care of you, slash your tires.
Point of order, please.
You're supposed to be a leader of this city. You're supposed to represent the residents here.
Okay, okay, at this time, any further public comment?
Dana Parrish. Ma'am, that was disturbing, for the mayor of this city to accuse, accuse a resident of, or ask her if she slashed his tires is disturbing, to say the least. I think people need to remember that the city of Dearborn Heights was in very difficult times just a very few years ago. It wasn't the city's fault, I mean, the economy took a dump in 2008, right after the housing downturn. But people also need to remember that it wasn't some great move by somebody with an incredible brainchild of an idea that fixed it. Who fixed the city?
Residents did.
You're damn right, this residents did.
Headley override.
Headley override did it. Yes, some department heads took a 10% pay increase, but they worked 20% less.
Decrease.
Excuse me, decrease, thank you very much. But they also worked 20% less, because they came in four days instead of five. And the hourly employees also stepped back and came in one day a week less as well. And then, we're arguing back and forth over item 11B, I think it is, and the mayor's making his pay and his pension, and somehow, I'm supposed to understand, and this gentleman's supposed to understand, how the mayor can make his pay and his pension, and is benefiting the cities of Dearborn Heights. How is that benefiting the city and the residents of Dearborn Heights? I'm trying to figure out the mathematics in my head, how that's benefiting, because I know what a drop program is. City of Dearborn Heights is well-known for their drop program, trust me. So, the person gets to keep working, and the benefit to the residents of the city of Dearborn Heights for them taking this drop program is, they don't have to hire another person to fulfill this job, they keep making their full-time pension, they draw their, oh, and they don't accumulate any more seniority. They draw their pension and their paycheck, oh, and then we don't have to pay them any more benefits, any more fringe benefits, so they don't accrue anymore, oh, and perhaps out of the, I don't know how this one is structured, but perhaps also he doesn't get his Blue Cross paid for, it comes out of his pension allowance. So how does that benefit the residents? I'm trying to figure out how that benefits the residents, because that's what this ordinance is supposed to be about, that's what these ordinances are supposed to be written for, to benefit us, as the residents. Because remember, I and these people are your boss, you're not my boss. And that's what I got told all the years I was a policeman. You work for me. Remember that. You work for me. She does, and all of you work for me. I'm the taxpayer, I'm the residents, and all these people are the residents. Remember that. They all took an oath, the three of them took an oath again tonight to obey it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening again, and I did ask for extra time during meeting, which didn't really happen to the end. I'd like to mention something for the CSO and for those projects they amended. I remember Representative John Dingell, God rest him in peace, he got Dearborn $16 million a grant when they started this project, under condition the city matched it with $16 million. So I recommend to all of you, including the mayor and the city council, that you contact your senator, our senator, and our US representative, and see if we can get any money from the federal government or from the state. Second thing, I have a question for the mayor, and I hope you can answer it. I came here before, and I claimed that there is $1.4 million misused from the PEG program. I would like the mayor to look me straight on and tell me that he did not use this money for cash flow at one point. Thank you.
I didn't get a chance to respond, if that's okay.
Please do. I have to read something from the notes to the financial statement of June 30th, 2019. The notes on page 30. Any expenditure that exceed the budget must be approved by the city council through a budget amendment. The city council approves all budget amendments. I go to page 55, required supplemental information, this is from Plant Moran. Budget recompares in a schedule corporate fund. I look at the corporation council, the city council approved $190,200 for the legal council. It was exceeded by $30,788. I went back, and I looked at the expenses which were submitted by the legal council to the city council to be approved. In March, Mr. Mayatki submitted $14,738,000. The balance was $25,296 and change. Secret Warde Lynch, they submitted $6,897, which roughly leave the balance around $10,000. Forgive me. The next month, on 5/8/19, the amount was submitted, $11,700. If you look at it, already we exceeded the balance which was approved by the city council. And amount budget before payment was blank. It should be, enter parentheses, in the negative. Nobody came to you and asked you to amend the budget to give them more money to pay. We keep going, next month's, $12,811, it's a blank in May. And $15,000 on 7/1/19, that's in July, and always this is for the months before, $15,653, and it is blank again. We already exceeded $30,000 from the budget which you basically approved. And $1,988 for Cummin McLory. Then we go to 8/5/19, which brings the July basically service. It's $15,583, and there is $200,000 budgeted. The question is, if you are the body who approve any changes in the budget, why this administration did not submit, at least out of respect, some amendment to you to add $30,000 to the budget of the legal council? And I'm going to read here from ethics misconduct in office by public officers. Misfeasance, which is the doing of a lawful act in a wrongful manner. And nonfeasance, which is the failure to perform an act required by the duties of the office, which he took, swore to uphold the Constitution and to protect the city. So this has been going on several times, several places, and until now, no answers. So please, follow the charter, it's time for this man to go home.
Thank you. Any other public announcements? You have three minutes, and state your name.
My name's Ed Prolik, I reside on Robin Dale Street. I brought these papers here because they, because there's an ordinance, and it's thing as I've been dressed. Now, I'm gonna state something to all the council people. Since Mr. Larky was supposed to be working on that, and you're a lawyer, and Mr. Constance, you're a lawyer too, and I brought that up when you had recess, you told me this freedom of speech. I agree with you, okay? Wait, no, it's like, anyway, anyway, yeah, this, and that, the papers should, it's fine, if they go on the porch, but not to be on the grass and on the street, and when the sweeper's gonna- And when they, when the sweeper's gonna come down, the machine's gonna get, broken. That's one issue, okay? Then there are light issue that I brought up, and that Diane Webb was supposed to call me back. She never called me back, okay? It's not my duty to call her, okay? She was supposed to call me. She hasn't called me, okay? Like, like this lady said, the lights are out. Warren looks like hell, okay? And our mayor, he belongs to the church I belong to. You gotta start dressing like a, like a, like a mayor, because you dress like from the 1930s, and that's where you're taking the city to the 1930 era, okay?
Okay, okay, sir.
Well, I'm just saying.
Sir.
So, uh...
Sir, we're not gonna attack.
Well, anyway, beside the point. I want this issue taken care of, okay? If not, you, you need to get to hold of the, uh, Attorney General's office, because it is the ordinance. It's not, and they're not buying by the ordinance. Because that's a violation when you're littering, okay? Have a nice day and Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas to you all.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Madam Chair, may I say something real quick? There's been a lot of personal attacks, and that's not allowed. It's against policy and procedure of a city council meeting. I respectfully ask that people no longer be allowed to do that.
Okay, Lisa, at this point, we'll announce it next time. I've done this in the beginning of meetings in the past.
If they can't stop, they need to be removed. For us to leave. Out of control. Okay.
Okay, uh, Jack?
Name in three minutes.
Jack McIntyre, Hazelton Street. I wasn't really planning on doing this. I was hoping I'd be the last word and I could say, let's just really have a Merry Christmas. So I'm, I'm gonna still say that, but I need to say something first. Since I've been employed here, I think I can count on one hand how many times I haven't been here on a Friday. Uh, even when I've gone on vacation, uh, I'm plugged in 24/7. But I am here every Friday and most Saturdays. And yet, my pay was still cut and, and it had, you know, a small amount has been restored. But even recently, last Friday, uh, I signed up to go to, I wasn't actually in the building during most of the day, but I was at an animal conference in Dearborn that I signed up for. I first checked into the hospital at 6:00 in the morning for my treatment. Finished my treatment, went right to the conference, spent eight and a half hours there, and then came here at the end of the day to wrap up some emails and things that needed to be done. So I don't think it's fair that people keep saying that we don't work Fridays. As soon as I was hired in here, it was very clearly made, uh, I was, it was made clear to me that we are expected to work on Fridays, and we do. Uh, many, uh, most of the directors, John Riley and I see each other every Friday. So I wanted to say that, Councilman Abdullah, you had mentioned about the beautification commission. I think it's a great idea, but I did want to point out, I've mentioned it before, that ordinance officers kind of came up with their own in the interim, and we hand out Bravo awards. We've been doing that for two years, and we want to continue doing that. And, uh, you know, it's funny about the leaf thing. Uh, as many causes I get, uh, people asking to please go to this house and ask them to remove their leaves. I have an equal amount of people that call and say, leave my leaves alone. I have a process of how I, um, let them work over the winter months for mulch and things like that. But I think it's all in education, and I think when we have opportunities, we should knock on our neighbors' doors and point to them out. There was a woman today that called me, and she was really shocked that she got something from our office that said, please, you know, correct the leaves. And once I explained to her that, you know, over the months, they end up in the street, and then they end up in our sewers, and that's how we get backups and that. She was totally responsive to that. She thought that was amazing that. She said, I never even thought about it that way, so... Uh, and she came from a community where, um, at least what she told me, they don't, they don't pick up the leaf, so... And then I want to, uh, you know, I deal with the GFL route supervisor on a daily basis. Uh, the current one is Tony. He's super responsive. If any of you have had an opportunity to talk with him, if something's going on, he wants to know about it. He wants to correct it. And, um, I happened to run into one of the GFL peoples at an, um, one of the, um, management staff of GFL at an event last week. And I wanted to read to her a really cool thing. I don't know if any of you saw it, posted on the community page, but this little boy who's been really sick in, uh, in the South End, he's been going through some surgeries and different medical problems. Uh, every day, he looks forward to the GFL guy showing up in front of his house, honking his horn, so... You know, um, they, they do a good job. They want to do a good job. I would say the majority of them want to continue doing a good job, so make sure you call them. Uh, call DPW for sure, like Councilman Hicks Clayton had said, and make sure this information is getting tracked and reported. Because I think what happens is a lot of us go to Facebook, or we say that we called, and we just need to make sure we keep calling. So Merry Christmas. I hope everyone gets to spend time with their families. If you have nowhere to go, I think, I don't know. Okay, I thought the HR director was gonna open up her home on Christmas for... So Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas, thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Do I hear a motion to end our meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
One last one, one last one. I just want to wish everybody happy holidays. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Cookies are good.
We still have cookies.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, that's it. That's all.